In just a minute, we're gonna have begin our program. So if you can all take a seat. On behalf of Supervisor Dave Pine, welcome you all to the Burlingame High School. And we'll be restarting our board meeting for January 7th. But we're gonna start with an opening song by the Ragazzi Boys Chorus, "The Sound of the Trumpet." They're coming any minute now.
Sound the trumpet. Sound the trumpet. Sound, sound, sound the trumpet till around. You make the listening shows rebound. You make the listening shows rebound. Sound the trumpet. Sound, sound, sound the trumpet till around. You make the listening shows rebound. You make the listening shows rebound. You make the listening shows rebound. On the spot, you're on. On the spot, you're on. The spot, you're on. We all were playing. All the instruments, so joy. All the instruments, so joy. The joy, as simple as I ever. To celebrate, to celebrate the glories of his death. The glories, the glories of his death.
One of the boys in the chorus is actually the son of Supervisor Dave Pine. So congratulations. Any case, first of all, we're gonna reconvene our board meeting for January 7th. So I'm gonna have you please rise and will state the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the government, for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, as the outgoing president, I get an opportunity to say a few words. As John Malpe knows, I'm never at a loss for a few words. So I have a lot of words probably. But any case, you know, we are one week into 2014 and I'm really proud to say that San Mateo County really is in great shape with an expanding economy and a compassionate support system for many of those who are less fortunate. The county is truly one of the gems of California and the United States and the world. We, of course, have a history of being overshadowed by San Francisco and Silicon Valley, even though this is where people want to live, play, and work. When one of our cities has the motto "Climate best by government" test, it's not difficult to figure out why people want to live here. But nonetheless, we here in San Mateo County continue to be vexed by the fact that people call us the best-kept secret of the Bay Area. Everyone in the world knows the name of San Francisco, but when you start calling out the names of our 20 cities or the county in general, it's really a different story. It's a little painful to the ego, but we all know it's true. While people leave their hearts in San Francisco and are asked if they know the way to San Jose, there's really no musical reminder of San Mateo's fame. And that is a shame, in a way, because San Mateo County is a truly remarkable place in so many ways. We have amazing scenery from the bay to the Pacific Ocean and remarkable businesses from Genentech to Oracle to Facebook, as well as smaller businesses that make our community special. I think our quality of life here is really second to none. The challenge is really to find ways to share that quality through the ranks of our residents. So we do have a dynamic philosophy of helping people through county government. And I want to talk about how proud I am to be a member of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors and how grateful I am to the compassionate and caring voters who live here. Because of them, we are able to face our fiscal challenges in a much more reasonable manner, bringing high standards to local health care, security, and education. I thank my colleagues on this board for their conscientious efforts and valued contributions to the quality of life in our county. Our responsibilities in county government range from memberships in regional and state agencies to maintaining a comprehensive health system and working with other elected officials from the sheriff to the district attorney. The ability to collaborate effectively is perhaps the most important skill that I believe that we all share, something that local government really does seem to do better than other more larger bodies. In 2013, I had the great privilege of serving as president of this board, and it was both an honor and a challenge for me. And I have to tell you that I enjoyed the ceremonial aspects, but I really appreciated the necessity to focus my own efforts on what I could and what I could not accomplish. And I'm grateful to my excellent staff because I couldn't do it without their help. That's Chris, Sarah, and Nicholas are very professional, dedicated, and committed to serving all of the citizens of San Mateo County. Well, as you all know, the 3rd District of San Mateo County has a larger percentage of unincorporated area than any other district. We five on the board don't have authority over the many city governments in our county, even though some people think we can overrule them. That's just not the case. However, the unincorporated area does look to county government to provide the services a city would normally offer, and I have been known to joke about being the mayor of the unincorporated area. Well, since I won't be the president this year, I can still rely on the continued challenge of being mayor, something I really take very seriously and take to heart. And looking back at 2013, I'd like to highlight just a few items. We finalized plans to open a Devil's Slide Trail in 2014 as a new San Mateo County park. This will be a world-class specialty trail for viewing and enjoying our really gorgeous coast. We opened the Fair Oaks Health Center and developed a plan for Pescadero Health Clinic. We pursued safety projects on transportation corridors ranging from new bike lanes striping on Alpine Road to comprehensive plans for Highway 1 on the coast side. This year, we'll be entering the second half of our two-year budget project, which will help us maintain ongoing programs that are successful and evaluate the performance of our overall efforts. We are seriously making inroads on paying down our retirement liability, making the county a fiscally sound employer and reliable steward of tax dollars. We do not take these responsibilities lightly. And as one of the largest employers in the county, it's important for us to maintain our appreciation for all of those good people who make their careers in the service of the county. In my district, I've committed to supporting and working with the agricultural industry, and I'm also proud of our efforts to plan a long-range revitalization of Princeton by the Sea. But now, it's time to turn the proverbial gavel over to another supervisor and offer a tiny bit of advice in the form of something that Theodore Roosevelt once said. "In any moment of decision, the best thing you can do is the right thing. The next best thing you can do is the wrong thing. And the worst thing that you can do is nothing." So with that, we now will go to the election of the 2014 Board President. It'd be my honor to nominate Supervisor Dave Pine. Do I have a second?
I have a second, yes.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Supervisor Pine, you're now our -- administer the oath of office.[629.16][629.16](Applause)
We are now going to proceed with the administration of the oath of office, and my family is going to assist me with that honor tonight. I have Jack Pine, Kevin Pine, and my wife, Jane Pine. Are we ready?
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Dave Pine, do solemnly swear.
I, Dave Pine, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon -- I am about -- upon which to enter. Well, I'm very honored and excited about serving as the president of the Board of Supervisors. But before I proceed the remarks, it's important to take a moment and talk a little bit about Don Horsley and the terrific job he has done for this county. A couple things about Don. Measure A has made a tremendous difference for San Mateo County. And Measure A was the one-half cent sales tax that raised new revenues. Don Horsley was a real champion of that and deserves much, much credit for the success of Measure A. On a more personal level, as a new supervisor, Don's been a great mentor. I have been in his office many times, trying to understand where I've gone wrong. And (laugh) Don knows this county better than anyone. He knows almost everyone who lives in this county, and his perspective has been invaluable to me. And also, you know, you won't find anyone in this county with a bigger heart and more compassion than Don Horsley. He cares very deeply about the people in this county who are less fortunate and who the county serves and who need our help and support. And Don has a big, big heart, and you see that in everything he does. So it is -- you've done a terrific job, Don, as the president, and I will turn over to my colleagues for some further remarks.[844.01][844.01](Applause)
Don, I would just like to thank you for the work that you have done, especially in your own district, but especially the work that you have done on the coast. Everybody in California, and especially in San Mateo County, values and deeply appreciates the coast and the work that you have done from Pescadero to Pacifica, and especially the work you are about to embark on at Princeton Harbor have just been short of remarkable. Pescadero, deep in the south of our county, needed some public -- a public health nurse, and you went out and found that public health nurse, got a grant so that they could have health care on a daily basis. What you've done in Pacifica with the library and the other structural needs, and as well as embarking on the Princeton Master Plan, you've really served your constituents very well, and I've been proud to watch that happen.[911.63][911.63](Applause)
Don, I (laugh) I'm not gonna tease you, Don. I've done that all year long. I get to take a breather now. I just want to say what a yeoman's job you really did, Don. You know, you served this year with great professionalism. You served with great heart. You served with great humor. You will and are the mayor of the unincorporated areas for the most part in this county. You worked so hard for Measure A, and you've even done a better job in helping spend the money for Measure A and your unincorporated areas. But truthfully, you do have a very difficult district. The coast has a lot of unincorporated area. It's wide open, as Carol mentioned. You know, everybody loves our coast, and you're doing a lot of things to help improve the coast. Devil's Slide was huge this year. And what Don really pushed for too, and that should've gone to the bottom of the totem pole as it related to park improvements, but Don saw that as a real asset to the county and has helped move that up so that could open this year.
Thanks.
Don, thank you for your great effort. We've appreciated it. We're gonna miss you as chair, but I'm gonna bug you all year long anyway.
Yeah, I know.[982.13][982.13](Laughter)[983.13][983.13](Applause)
I guess we don't have to call you president anymore?
No.
Okay.
You don't make coffee either.
No. I just wanted you to know that when President Pine said that you knew everybody in the county, Supervisor Tissier said you were a relic.[1004.51][1004.51](Laughter) And that sort of -- the thing I've learned about being a new supervisor is that sense of humor between the two of them and the board has sort of gone on all year long, which has made -- which has really made life easier. Don does have a tremendous sense of humor. I think he's -- the thing I've learned in this last year is that he's very, very gracious. His heart is open to everybody, especially those less fortunate than us. I was always struck by the way he treated the public who came and spoke before the board. And I remember one, I think he was 90-year-old veteran, and normally speakers get two minutes. And this gentleman had served our country and, as I said, was a veteran, and I think Don let him speak for 10 or 15 minutes. But that's the sort of thing that Don did, I think, in terms of treating the public. One of the things that I really, really enjoyed this year as a supervisor was hearing all of Don's stories. And it seemed like any time somebody came before the Board of Supervisors, Don at one time or another had worked with them or their father or their grandfather, and he[1085.13][1085.13](laugh) and a great-great-grandfather. And he (knock on door) and he would tell these stories. And for those of you that don't know, he's a history buff, and don't ever ask him about MacArthur or anything to do with World War II or the Civil War, because he'll go on for hours. His sense of humor has been demonstrated, I think, throughout the year. I personally have learned a lot watching Don as he served the board and the people as president. And, Don, you really are a great guy and a true professional, and it's really a privilege to work with you. So thank you for your service.[1131.13][1131.13](Applause)
We do have another item of business, which is to take nominations for the vice president of the board for the 2014 county year. So nomination for vice president.
I'd like to take the opportunity to nominate Carol Groom for vice president of our board.
I'll second the nomination.
We have motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Well, thank you all for being here tonight and joining us for the ceremony. You know, our board meetings aren't so normally well-attended.[1190.01][1190.01](Laughter) I think I will credit that to the Ragazzi Boys Chorus and invite you to come to all of our meetings. It's 9:00 in the morning on Tuesdays. So I'd like to start with some special thank yous. First, I wanted to thank the San Mateo Union High School District for providing us with this really special venue for the event tonight. As a former member of the San Mateo Union High School Board, I'm glad to see they're using the bond money to do nice things like renovate this gorgeous, gorgeous theater. I'd like to thank all who really worked hard to put the event together, the county manager's office, my staff, the VRS catering service, and the high school district personnel. Of course, we thank the Ragazzi Chorus for treating us with their singing. To my colleagues on the Board of Supervisors, I really thank you for teaching me how to be a good supervisor, and I admire your dedication and commitment to public service. It's -- we're lucky to have you. And most of all, I thank my family for participating tonight and for all the love and support they give me in this public service profession of mine. Okay, so now here comes the speech.[1268.13][1268.13](Laughter) So everyone has to try to stay awake. It won't take too long, and when it's over, there'll be another song and then a reception.[1277.33][1277.33](Laughter) Kevin, be good. As Supervisor Horsley mentioned, our county is doing very, very well. For the most part, the Great Recession is in the rearview mirror. Our unemployment rate's about 5 percent, second lowest in the state. Our median income, family income, is among the highest in the state. We have great business growth, particularly in the technology sector, and lots and lots of good news. But there is another side of San Mateo County, and even though we have this great wealth, many still struggle. One of seven of our residents receives some type of medical or human service assistance from the county government. One out of three kids in our public schools qualify for free and reduced lunch. There are 1,300 people who won't have a home to go to tonight and may be in their car or in some kind of a makeshift encampment. And then the dark side of this real estate boom is that it's becoming more and more difficult for people to pay the mortgage and pay the rent when the median home price is about $1 million and a single one-room apartment is $2,000. Federally, federal officials say we have about 6% of our county, 50,000 people, who live in poverty. But when you take into account the cost of housing, you know, Stanford has done some analysis to say that's really more like 136,000 people. And of course, this booming economy means we can't get anywhere on 101 any time of the day or night. But my purpose today is really not to set forth a long list of policy prescriptions. Instead, I want to just lay out four themes or kind of frameworks, things that I think are important to guide our work. So these themes are the importance of investing in prevention and early intervention, fiscal discipline, the need for government efficiency and innovation, and the importance of just bringing passion to the work we do in the public sector. So in a sense, these are really New Year's resolutions for the county. And like the New Year's resolutions that we all make, they're kind of easy to list and not so easy, not so easy to do. So my -- the first resolution is to focus on prevention and early intervention. You know, one thing I certainly learned in my tenure on the board is, you know, how difficult and costly it is to help people who are in crisis, you know, people who are homeless or incarcerated or severely mentally ill or those suffering from substance abuse. You know, fortunately, we are in a financial position now where we can make some investments in prevention and early intervention that will better serve our residents and in the long run, you know, save taxpayers' dollars as well. With the passage of the Measure A one-half cent sales tax, the county has made some notable investments in these areas. For example, under the leadership of Supervisor Groom, the county has initiated the Big Lift Program with the goal of increasing the number of third graders who can read at grade level in the third grade. It's an interesting metric because it's been said that until third grade, you learn to read, but when you're after third grade, you're reading to learn. So that's why we're so focused on that metric. The Big Lift has many, many components, and the most ambitious is to provide more opportunities for three- and four-year-olds to go to preschool. The county has also made committed investments in services for youth at risk of mental illness and substance abuse. The hope is that we can focus these services on youth before they have to face these difficulties that lead to them having trouble in school or with their families or being involved with the criminal justice system. You know, the principle of early intervention works in other areas too. I'm very interested in the challenge of sea level rise and committing to working on that in the years ahead. And sea level rise is really one of the most serious consequences of climate change and will have profound effects here in the county. We have more people and more property at risk from rising sea levels than any county in the state. In the event the bay were to rise 55 inches, which some think could occur by the end of the century, a lot of our county could be underwater. Redwood City, Redwood Shores, Foster City, SFO, Route 101. So sea level rise has been described as this kind of slow-moving emergency. This is a good issue where we should think about trying to plan ahead and taking action early. My second resolution is to maintain fiscal discipline. You know, right now, the county is in an incredibly strong financial position. Measure A sales tax brings in about $60 million extra dollars a year. We passed a Measure T tax to raise revenue from auto rentals. And in addition, the property tax growth rate is the fourth largest in the history of the county. But you know, we know this, these good times won't last. You know, it seems to me the modern economy is just becoming more and more subject to dramatic booms and busts. And right now, you know, you have the stock market up 30%, all this red-hot real estate, all these IPOs, and some people think maybe we're in a bubble already. So in this environment, we need to continue to do the things that have made San Mateo County have the highest bond rating in the entire state of California. So we have a good record and a good foundation to work on. So some specifics, it means to continue to look for opportunities to pay down future liabilities like we've done with our pension obligations. You know, I'm very, very proud of the Board of Supervisors for deciding to make a $50 million one-time payment this year in addition to our normal obligations, and then subsequently $10 million each year for the next nine years. We need to be careful with our number of our headcount growth. You know, it's interesting, before the Great Recession, the county had about 5,600 employees. We have 5,140 today. So we'll have to watch that number carefully. You know, we also need to make capital investments that will lower our operating costs and generate new revenues through such things as energy efficiency. And we have this opportunity to potentially redesign the Cordillus Mental Health Center. And interestingly enough, if we do that in the right way, we can actually get more revenue from the federal government for providing services. And then maybe the hardest thing is, you know, we need to be willing to stop doing things if we don't think they really work. You know, and typically, that's, you know, that's done in times of budget crisis, but something we should, we can and should do even in these more prosperous times. My third resolution is to try to bring some more innovation and efficiency to the way we operate in government. You know, before my public service career, I did spend almost 20 years in the private sector, working with tech companies and was in very entrepreneurial environments. And the culture and pace of change and decision-making was, shall we say, a little bit more action-oriented in that environment. But you know, it's a really misguided notion, though, to assert that somehow, you know, government should be run like a business. And that's because our mission and our obligations are completely unlike those pursued by the private sector. You know, the county government, we're responsible for implementing the social safety net, no matter how difficult and how costly that is. And the value of what we do is very hard to measure in terms of dollars and cents. But all that said, there's plenty of room for innovation, and we've started some things that I'm excited about that I think can increase our efficiency and effectiveness. Our Agile Workforce Initiative, we are looking very, very hard at, you know, what's the right mix of permanent employees, short-term employees, contractors, and community volunteers for delivering services to residents. We're committed to investing more in IT infrastructure. Recently, Code for America came to the county, and they worked with us to develop these smartphone apps so that people could access CalFresh benefits on their smartphones. I think this is exactly the kind of thing we should focus on. Our Health Department has done this really, really good work in implementing a really thorough review of how they thorough review of how they conduct all their processes. It's called the Lean Process, and you're trying to find more value, you know, with less waste, and I think we could expand that. And then finally, we really have to measure. We have to measure what we do. We recently rolled out performance metrics dashboards for our Measure A initiatives, and I think this is the beginning of an ongoing effort. I mean, if you don't measure something, you can't be effective. And then my final resolution is, you know, to bring more passion, to bring more passion to our work. You know, the challenges that we face in the county are, you know, they're really -- sometimes they just seem really intractable. You know, there are often multiple agencies involved and all this regulatory maze and multiple stakeholders all wanting different things. So, you know, there are days where you just think like, man, you know, this is not going to happen. But, you know, in this kind of environment, you know, we can't accept that attitude. You know, we have to kind of keep the passion and find the passion to try to move forward on the issues that confront us. And when you look around the county, both in our county government elsewhere, you know, there are individuals we all know and work with that just bring a tremendous passion to their work, and they kind of persevere through all obstacles. And, you know, these are really special people, and not a lot happens without them. It's been said that one person with passion is better than 40 people who are merely interested. So I -- one of my resolutions is for both myself and for the public sector as a whole to instill as much passion as we can in our work. So that will conclude my remarks. I thank you again for attending the event tonight and for all your good wishes. It really is a privilege to serve on the Board of Supervisors and to work with my colleagues and all of you to try to make our community a better place. We will close our event with another song by the Ragazzi Boys Choir and then adjourned to the reception. So thank you for your attention.
other piece of business that is important to attend to. I have a special gift tonight for our outgoing president, Don Horsley. What we have here for you, Don, behalf of the Board of Supervisors, are San Mateo County engraved golf balls that we know that you'll use at Sharp Park and elsewhere. And some flowers from our wife Jane. So please join us in the reception. Thank you.